Over for proof to view later through the council's website. It's also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. The meeting today is open to the public, except for one item that contains exempt information, item 12, will not be webcast and any public or press in attendance will be asked to leave the meeting for this item. We have received no public petitions, questions or statements. Please request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from town hall staff. The assembly point is two to square. Can I now please ask members of the committee to introduce themselves?
Hello, Lindsay Thomas, Assistant Director, Democracy, Information and Elections.
Philip Pegg, Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Claire Taylor, Chief Operating Officer.
Jane Willbe, Assistant Director of Finance and Accounting.
Councillor Matt Ryan, Member for Derry Ward.
Councillor Galter, Southie Ward.
Councillor Laura Moynihan, Councillor for Manor Castle.
Linda Hunter, Senior Finance Manager, Interlord at Miss Management.
Becky Toll, Assistant Director from Children's Services.
Meredith Teasdale, Strategic Director of Children.
Councillor Seddy, Folkes, Manor Castle Ward.
Simon Cleven-Jones, British Fringeona.
Philippa Bedet, Democratic Services.
Thank you very much, everybody. We now move on to item two, apologies for absence. We have received apologies from Councillor Marouf Ralph and James Brackley, who's the independent courted member. Item three, exclusion of the press and public. A repeat of what I said earlier, we have one item on today's agenda which excludes from the press and public. Item 12, excluded from the press and public because the report contains exempt information described in paragraph three of part one of schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972 as amended. As already mentioned, this item will not be webcast and any public or press in attendance will be asked to leave the meeting. Right, okay. Item four, declarations of interest. Do any members wish to declare an interest in any of the items or the business on the agenda? Okay, thank you. Item five, minutes of previous meeting. Can members approve as a correct record the minutes of the meeting held on the 19th of June 2025? Any queries, any questions there? Make silence consent. Right, okay. Item six, no public petitions, questions or petitions have been submitted. Item seven, internal audit recommendation tracker progress report. I hand over to Linda, Linda Hunter.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, this is a report that tracks our audit recommendations and the progress being made. It's a rolling report that comes here every six months, so it's been here before. It identifies progress against the reports I've issued with no assurance opinion and limited high impact opinion. So within the report, the seven reports were tracked in in this six month period. There's two new reports added, which is excluded pupils and the PFI exit strategy. The details in here aren't in this report because the implementation dates haven't passed yet, so that means that they're still not outstanding, so we haven't put those on. But they will be on the next January 26 update because they're due then. So on page 19 of your pack, it outlines the 67 recommendations that were tracked in, 21 have been actioned and 46 are ongoing. I'll just highlight some key points here. There's 10 critical recommendations ongoing on page 19 that explains the five audits that relates to. I'll just give you some highlights. Establishment controls audit, we've done a follow up in there, there's lots of work and progress in this area. And we have spoken to our HR colleagues and finance. And there's an automated RCF, which is a resource control form. They're doing use of testing at the moment, so that's why we didn't sign that one off because it wasn't quite ready. But they've given us revised implementation for September, so we can see that good progress being done in that area. For the care leavers audit, again, there was four critical recommendations in here and two are outstanding, but two have been completed. So the areas that were completed were the members approved an exception policy and then also they've approved the council tax arrears to be cleared. The two outstanding points are ongoing and again, we could see work on this. So one of them was about doing some documentation and procedures and that was sort of halfway through, so they were near completion for that. And then there were quite a way through as well updating the care offer. So again, the revised implementation date for September 25 for that. Family time, there's 17 outstanding recommendations in here. Four of those have got critical priority recommendations. We've got colleagues Meredith and Becky here to go through and give you an update on progress for those. I just want to highlight as well, there's 10 red rated recommendations in the report. Red rated is where they've been outstanding for more than 12 months after the date of the implementation was agreed. So it could be that they agree the implementation, they needed six months to implement it, but then we've given another 12 months after that, so that's when they turn red. So that's what I mean by red. And at the back of the pack, it does give you the red amber green highlights as well as to how we nominate that. If it's green, sorry, the pack's black and white, but if it was green, if you look on your laptops, that's where it's been actioned. So that'd be the 21 that's been actioned. And on page 20, it highlights there about the discussions I've had. So this report, before it came here, it went to SLB and the Corporate Assurance Board. In summary, SLB went through all the critical and red rated recommendations. They asked each exactly to give a verbal update on all those seven reports as to where they're at and why things are outstanding. And then it was also agreed as well there that Meredith did actually volunteer to come here to go through for the family time audit. Because like I mentioned, there's 17 there that are outstanding. Appendix one gives you more details about the recommendation updated position. So I think what I'll do now is, because the key one here is like the family time, which is why Meredith and Becky are here. So if there's any questions, can we leave that until Becky and Meredith have done their giving you a brief update and then we can do the questions after if that's okay?
So just wanted to say that we take it really seriously, the no assurance report. And we are working to make sure that the recommendations are undertaken. Becky will go into detail. One of the things which has hindered some of the delivery in the short term since the report was published has been sickness of the key team manager who was delivering some of the changes. But that person has returned to work and we are making sure that we deliver the changes and that, as you will see from the amber, that September is the date that we will have completed the vast majority of the recommendations. But I'll hand over to Becky who can give more detail.
Yes, in terms of the outstanding, particularly in regard to the legalities of family time, when we've been to court and there are court ordered family time, we are now tracking those so that that is complete. There was a new post in children's who tracks all the public law outlines and we're able to track that now. And on our recording system, we now have a tab which is clearly marked as which section of the children's acts the family time is under. So that is all reportable and that's completed now. So that really covers all the ones where the section, it's section 34, 37 or section seven, they're all being tracked now and we can clearly see which part of the children's act that is. There were some concerns around the recording of mileage for workers and whether that was the correct mileage and whether that was being recorded appropriately. There are regular audits that now take place within family time. And again, that is part of the supervision that happens with workers as well. And we've got a clear recording of, so there's a consistent approach. So if you're going from A to B, there's a clear mileage that's been recorded and that's been checked as well. There was the community parenting strategy, that was to be reviewed, that has been reviewed and there's currently ongoing priority one with the agenda for that. So that we're constantly looking at ways to offer a more child centred family time for parents who can't live with their children at the current time. There was also some concern around when sessions are cancelled and actually what workers doing at that point. So they will now, that's very clear in diary management, that they'll either be assigned to another piece of work or they'll be getting rooms ready for future work or they'll be preparing for future work. So there's a clear audit trail in that for when sessions are cancelled because that can quite often happen last thing. The other thing is that when parents cancel family time at the last minute, quite often the foster carers where the children are staying will have other plans. So actually the family time worker, although won't be facilitating family time with the parent, will actually take the child out to a playground etc so that it's worthwhile for that child. So they've not just been brought quite a long way sometimes for nothing. And then in terms of performance for family time, we've now got a system where we are beginning to track the performance of family time. That's not complete, but we're hoping that that will be complete by September. We've started to do that and we need to get practice guidance for the team so that we can see how many cases they should be having and what the expectation is of them as a family time worker. I think that's the majority of them. Thank you.
I think that just demonstrates as well, because like I say, we did the follow up audit and things are moving all the time. And like I say, the colleagues are working on them. So like I say, a number of those now turned to green. So when we do the report back in January again, you'll see that a lot of those have turned to green. So, but like I say, because I had to do the timeline, it needed to go to SLB, then Corporate Assurance Board and then here. The papers had to go out a few weeks ago, so it's, yeah, things have moved on since then. So thank you for that update. Is there any other questions?
Simon?
Thank you, thank you Chair and thank you for this report. I suppose I've got a few questions. Just, I mean, in general, not specifically from your level, these are probably not questions that you're going to want to answer either. But I suppose my first question was around the, some of these were reported closed in the last report. I'm just wondering, who caught that? Was it audit? Was it self reported? Do we know how that happened? And looking at the, looking at the report, you know, there's been wholesale movements of the target dates. And so this may be a bit that you don't want to touch. Does, I mean, is this pointing to a problem at a corporate level? You know, has this been appropriately dealt with at a corporate level? You know, so these revisions across the board at this point, you know, we don't, you know, I always want to see, you know, these things dealt with. And, you know, I see a list of something, you take them off and you get rid of them and you don't want them hanging around, especially something as serious as this. So, yeah, to see, to see the updated, the updated report concerns me. And really, I think, you know, we need to, as I say, certainly if things have been reported as done and not being done, you know, can we be sure about the rest of the report? And really, again, as I say, you know, are there any systemic reasons for those revisions? Thank you.
Yeah, I just explained, the process for closing these is, that's why the recommendation is just to note the report, I'm not recommended to take any of these off. So all these seven will appear on the next report as well. So none of them are going to be closed. The only way that we close them off is if all the recommendations have turned to green and then I take the whole report off. So there'll be nothing on here that I'm closing. Is that the question you're saying? Yeah, so not close anything.
Someone said it was reported to be closed in the last report and it's now not closed. Have I misinterpreted that?
All right.
Someone said this was closed in the last report.
Did I say none of them? Oh, I think, I think you meant, yeah, you meant the individual recommendations. Yeah, so what happens sometimes is at the follow up meeting, we ask for a narrative from the auditee to say where you are with this position of this recommendation. Then we ask for evidence to support it. So it could be that we've not quite seen enough evidence to support the statement so it stays open until we've got all the evidence. I think that's probably one that you've seen.
Right, I understand that, that's great, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so grid, one of those systemic issues, does it answer that?
Yeah, and then the corporate, like I say, the corporate level, this report goes to the senior leadership board before it comes to here. And that is where they have the discussion about any of the critical recommendations and the red ones. But to be fair, this SLB this time went through the whole report, went through all the recommendations. So it does get a corporate review in it.
Yeah, my point really is, is that obviously, you know, I see these as targets, these were targets that were missed, we've missed a lot of them. Is there a reason for that? Are we, are we working hard enough to make sure they're not missed? I suppose is my question.
I've got Philip, let's come in.
Thank you. I think it's a good point to raise. I think what I would say is the recommendations are agreed with managers who are responsible for the delivery. Plans are delivered according to the timelines that are agreed with management, with internal audit. There will be circumstances that crop up that will mean that they're delayed and Becky referred and Meredith referred to some of those in the presentation that they gave, where it might be wholly legitimate where someone is off sick and that they're responsible for delivery of a particular recommendation. But Linda is correct, that SLB, so the strategic leadership board, will look at these on a regular basis and that's where the corporate challenge will come in, where things are delayed. What we want to see is as many of these recommendations delivered and the changes made so that we're in a confident position that the risks that have been identified don't materialise. And that's the key thing that we want to mitigate, is that those risks don't materialise and that we can close those down as action's completed. Having said that, Linda is also correct in that we won't just close an action down because someone says, I've done that. Interlord it will want to see the evidence and be clear that we can demonstrate that those actions have been completed or the process has sufficiently changed so that we can be confident that the recommendation has been completed in full.
I'll certainly take note and it's worth of that, so thank you.
Right, next, Matt?
Yeah, mine's picking up very much, the cancer kind of jam was getting at, which is that a lot of the implementation dates are pushed back in the report. And specifically for the one about family time, it's got that September date of implementation. The assurances we can give, we're going to meet that and the risks we've opened ourselves up to for not, for having pushed that back to the council. And then generally, I suppose, of a lot of these have implementation dates have been pushed back, a lot of them to September, so the assurances we've got that they'll meet those dates, but then also some are beyond September and quite a bit beyond, as you say, the red rating beyond their dates and the risks we've opened ourselves up to as an organisation for not meeting those dates.
So I can give you assurances that the family times will be completed by September and actually Becky gave you some evidence of how we've already moved forward around that. And I do apologise that we hadn't delivered it in the time that we set out and it was because of sickness. What I can assure you is that we have maintained the safeguarding of our children throughout that period of time as well. So that risk around our children is not there and we've continued to make sure that children have been able to meet with their families whilst we've been delivering the changes as well.
Gareth?
Hiya, a couple of things. So one on page 19 regarding the PFI exit strategy. I get that it's not coming to this one, but I'm a little concerned if we're waiting until January, will there be any sort of interim reporting or? And then, sorry, the second one, again, page 52, it's talking about measures for renewing contracts. And I just want to be clear that I understand what's happening. So I believe what it's saying is that we have a new contract for new, for new setting, for new contracts, but that we haven't got any confirmation that we're reviewing the existing ones. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, that's correct. So that's, that was the point, that that's what needs to be put into place. So, yeah, that's right. And then for the first one that you mentioned about the PFI strategy, you're right, the timeline, the due for implementation to be in this report, so that there's nothing in there to be, to be actioned to date. So I think, to be fair, I think they were September deadline dates as well for all of those recommendations. So I can always give you, like I said, that's the only one, if that's the only one you want, I could always just give an interim one at a meeting between now and January if that would help. Rather than wait till January, yeah. I think it's September, so I'll get back to you, but if it is, I can look at the October meeting and just give you an update then. Yeah.
Laura?
And please, Meredith, that gave an assurance to, in response to Matt's question, that the safeguarding of children had been maintained. But I do worry a little bit that what are critical and high risks are depending on staff sickness. It does seem to be a risk in itself that we're, that we've got there. If we're depending on one person or whatever to maintain this important service, that ought to be a risk in itself to add to a risk register. And it doesn't, doesn't seem, it doesn't seem, you know, realistic that it depends on staff sickness.
So just to give you assurances that there is a team of people that work around family time. I think the delivery of some of the intricacies, such as the conversations around mileage and that conversation around supervision, that's where it's been delayed, is where that person has that responsibility to make sure that's happening. And there were people, obviously we had people overseeing that team, but it didn't have the grit that you would have if that person was in place. So it's not that anything fell apart, it's just that with that capacity issue, the thing that slipped was delivering on the recommendation, so not on the supervision of staff, not on the way that staff interacted or interacted with children. And that can sometimes, I mean, that is a risk, isn't it, full stop across the council, the sickness level and that, that impact that then has on capacity to be able to deliver change at speed and at pace is a fundamental risk.
I'd just like to say, yes, it is a risk across the council, but there's certain critical services where it is more important than others. You know, if I can't get the grass cuts on Sky Edge Fields because of staff sickness, it's not necessarily as critical as family time for children.
Thank you for that. I've got, I see no more questions on this report. We're asked, recommended to note the content of the report. Thank you very much. Thank you, Meredith, thank you. Thank you, everybody. We are now moving to the statement of accounts, item eight on the agenda for 2425. Welcome, everybody, if you'd like to introduce yourselves and present the report. Thank you.
Ruth Matheson, Finance Manager, Finance and Commercial Performance Services.
Claire Sharretts, Senior Finance Manager.
Hiya. Right, the purpose of this report is to inform members that the draft accounts were published on 8th of July and are now available for review. The report this year includes the full set of accounts to give the committee the opportunity to take a closer look at the full set much earlier. The draft set of accounts is now subject to external audit by KPMG and are also available for public inspection, which runs from the 9th of July until the 19th of August. As we go through the audit and officers continue to review, there will be amendments, but they don't usually change significantly. So in preparation for the final approval by this committee and to allow yourselves to become comfortable with them before signing, we do ask that you please start to look at the statement of accounts now. Because our hands are tied by accounting standards and legislation, the presentation of accounts is fairly technical and can be difficult to understand. So it's important we give you the right level of support to understand the challenge and ultimately be in a position to approve. Therefore, we do ask that you contact the team anytime with questions or requests for detailed information behind the figures. As in previous years, we will arrange an independent trainer to provide members of the committee with on coaching on how to understand the accounts so they can give guidance on where to question, challenge and again, which we plan to arrange in January in advance of the approval date. Also this year, the Chair has suggested that our team carry out internal training for members to take place in the autumn. And this will again give you the opportunity to ask further questions as we go through the detail. In terms of 2425, there has been various changes, so I wanted to give you a flavour of some of those and the highlights of this year's accounts. Firstly, IFRS 16 is a new leasing standard that was implemented. This new standard had been deferred for a number of years now because of its complexity, but is now fully adopted in the accounts. Standard requires where we have the right of use of an asset, that both the value of the asset and the value of the liability are brought onto the council's balance sheet and not simply expensed through revenue. Further phases of the Heart of the City Programme became operational during the year, which unwound the previous accounting treatment and saw the assets become operational. This includes the ownership of the new Radisson Blue Hotel, which is still in its infancy, but we continue to work through the long term accounting requirements. There's also been big movements between long term debtors and the council's fixed assets with the insourcing of leisure services, where the assets under Sheffield City Trust reverted back to the council ownership. The council also acquired a new company, Phoenix Sports Limited, which holds the English Institute of Sport. And although we've taken control of that company, due to materiality, group accounts were not triggered in this financial year. Finally, the value of the pension asset has decreased significantly. And this is again because of the unwinding of accounting treatment, prepaid pension contributions and restrictions of an asset ceiling. So the final audited version will come back to this committee for approval in February 2026, timing of which can be dependent on progress of KPMG's audit and any possible objections received by members of the public. The report recommends that this report is just noted by the committee today and we're happy to take questions, but also we're happy for you to raise them outside this meeting to allow us to provide more detailed responses and then a part of that internal training session that's being recommended. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I'm just going to read out what our independent person said, so they're recorded on the minutes because he can't be here today, obviously. He says, "It looks to me that the overall performance is quite stable. Council circa £6 million drawdown across the earmarked, earmarked general fund reserves", page 109, which is around 2% of the total general fund reserves. The total borrowing accounts was reduced by around £37 million, short and long term borrowing, on page 112, which if you look at the cash flow was only partly paid for via sale of investments. So essentially, we've more or less balanced the books while slightly reducing borrowing at a time when borrowing costs are quite high. General fund reserves remain over £300 million, which reads to be healthy, while total borrowing remains in line with other councils, but still quite high at just over £800 million." And he's saying, is that about right from his reading? Anyway.
Yes, that's correct. The borrowing...
Yes, that's correct. The borrowing, the borrowing reduced because we had two of our Lobo loans called in the year, about twenty-four million. And the rest of the, the reduction was just, you know, maturing loans for that year. Yes, the reserve's three, over three hundred million still, so.
Yes, three additional questions, which I know he's circulated anyway and you've partially responded to. Interest expense on page one to two-three has gone up from seventy-two point eight million from sixty-seven point five million. Despite overall borrowing going down, I assume because the cost, this is Philip, of government and other borrowing has generally gone up. Is this manageable going forward and is this likely to rise further as old debt is serviced?
So the answer to that is the, the change in the interest is actually due to the IFRS sixteen implementation. So just how some of the leases were accounted for, it just changed the interest calculations on those. There's more, there's more leases come onto balance sheets, so there's an interest element to those which appear to the interest calculations. But generally, interest is fairly stable.
Okay, the next question, which was short-term debtors, taxpayers and NMDR, page one-one, one hundred and forty. The bad debt impairments have risen again to ninety-one point one million from eighty-two point nine million last year and seventy-five point eight billion the year before. The remaining non-impaired debt has also again risen to sixty point nine million from fifty-three point eight million last year and forty-four point seven million the year before. That's a thirty-six per cent rise in outstanding debt in two years, taking after larger impairment charges. The offlog dashboard suggests that we are behind our peers in our council tax collection rates. I know the committee has raised questions about debt collection before, and I think internal audit have raised issues around debt collection as well. Would the committee be able to get an update on how this is being managed and perhaps ask for an update from internal audit in the next internal audit update?
Okay, so on, on short-term debtors then, there was a, there was a big jump in short-term debtors, but it's just whether it's a timing difference, as James points out, there's, it's just how the year-end cut across and where invoices had not been paid. Most of those debtors were with other local authorities or other bodies, particularly the combined authority. And they were all pretty much paid in April, so it's just, it just has, as we captured it, as of the thirty-first of March, those invoices were still outstanding. So it, it hit debtors instead, but they're pretty much cleared now. Yeah, so SIMCA and also a, a significant one from NHS England as well in respect of the GP hubs, the construction of those. So, you know, a big, a huge chunk of that is relating to that. In terms of council tax, yes, there has been, there's definitely an increase in council tax in debt there. And we'll need to get a more detailed, some more detailed information on, on why that's, you know, what's happening around that for members. So we'll include that in our detailed feedback.
If you're going to do, yeah, so it's going to come back to us. Okay. The final question, there's quite a sizable cash balance sitting in short-term deposits, page one hundred and forty. Is this just a timing issue or is there a reason we're holding such a large cash balance at the year end? One hundred and twenty-five point eight million from seventy-one point eight million last year end. I imagine we'd usually want to invest surplus cash or use it to pay down borrowing.
It's just, again, the way that the year-end has cut across the, the cash flow. A, a significant chunk of that was held at year-end because there was call dates on, again, a number of the Lobos. We had a couple of Lobos called earlier in the year and we needed to make, when they call a Lobo, if we decide to repay that immediately, we need to have that cash available. And then also just because it's a month end and a year end, you know, we need to make sure that we're, we're fairly liquid. We hold quite a lot of liquid funds just over the year end for anything unexpected that crops up or cash that doesn't come in that we expected to. So it's, it's also cash and cash equivalents, so it's not, it's just liquid cash. So a lot of that is in short-term deposits and we do invest that, even if it's just overnight.
Thanks, Chair. It's really a point of clarification, if I can share through you. As a new member, I'm, I'm going to use that this time, it probably goes after a little bit, as a new member to this committee, two reports now come that have for this committee to note. What I've not seen is any highlighting in, in that, in the reports about if there are bad policies that are taking us down the wrong route. Now, I'm, I'm not saying for this committee to forensically look at every policy, I'm not, but if officers find, so we've just heard about Heart of the City, you could net zero by twenty-three, et cetera, et cetera. If there are big generic policies that are taking us down a route, how would we as a committee be able to highlight that and also send to the policy committees to have a look? Because as policymakers, as policymakers, how are we supposed to know if we're not highlighting some of the policies that could take us down, 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 if you want, a wrong route or, or cost us more money, et cetera, further down the line? So I just wondered if that's within the remit of this audit committee? Or if, if it's not, where, where would we do that with the information that we get? Thanks, Chair.
Personally, I think that would be, but we're let down that we're noting things, but we're not, I, I can't, I struggle to see where we take things on from here and give great detail for us to send it back without. So it's just something, something that we need to look at as a committee and any recommendations in the future, we need to pass back. I'm, I'm with you on this. Gareth?
Hiya. Page two oh four, or, well, one, three, four of this part of the report, two oh four of the whole thing. Regarding sales of housing stock, I was under the impression that there was a huge sale of housing stock because of the change of right-to-buy rules. These don't appear to be that different from last year, so I was just wondering, is it that they're not here or was it less of a number that we're expecting?
So yes, that's right. The discount factor did occur in twenty-four, twenty-five, but those assets ready to be sold are classed in assets held for sale. So it might not be, you can't see that they've actually been disposed of, they're being held until, yeah, the process was still going through because we had such a, a big influx of requests. As at thirty-first of March, they were re-categorised in assets held for sale.
So will we see them next year?
They'll flow through the balance sheet, yeah, as disposals.
Any further questions? Simon?
Um, yeah, how's the February deadline looking?
I'm guessing that's for me. Yeah, the, the plan at the moment, and as, as I say, as an update, we're actually on site. We started sort of second week in July, so we're, we're on with where we're, we're up to. The plan is to get the majority, if not all, of the twenty-four, twenty-five work done by the end of September, leaving the October to December to try and build back some assurance that we need. And we'll touch on that in, in, probably in a later, in our report. So the, 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 the plan is to actually get the work done before Christmas with obviously the backstop date of, of February, when we're coming back to, to report back to you. That, that's where we're all working to and, and at this stage, I don't, we've no reason to think that that won't be achievable. He says, touching wood.
I see no further questions. The recommendation is to note the unaudited Statement of Accounts for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five. Right, item nine, Audit Plan twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five. The presenter of series, Matthew. I hand over to you.
Thank you, Chair. This is our Audit Plan for the financial statements to the end of March twenty-five. And as, as I identified earlier, the, the backstop date for the signing off of this is, I think it's the twenty-seventh of February this year for one, one day earlier, twenty-six. So thi- this is our Audit Plan. We, on page two-five-eight, we identify our materiality calculation, which is based on a percentage of your expenditure. Materiality working at thirty-eight million with a, a testing threshold of twenty-four point seven million. That, that, that's how we set our testing detail and we will report all misstatements identified over one point nine million, unless it has a, an issue of fraud or theft or, or loss of assets rather than a mistake. We will, we will report some of those. We've included in our, on page two sixty, the identification of our significant risks. And I'll touch on each of those as I go through and the reasons why those are seen as significant. So starting off with valuation of land and buildings and on page two-six-one, there's, there's some explanations into the terms of that. The reason why we see these as significant risks is more mostly about the fact that there is a huge estimation value within those valuations. So it's, it is a judgment call both from yourselves, your valuers and our experts who see that. So it's, it's, the risk is more about the estimation of the value, not necessarily that, that the, there's, there's issues in terms of the, of the documentation and the accounting, it's, it's the estimation figure. So then similarly, the, the next significant risk is the valuation of the post-retirement benefit obligation. The pensions liabilities, again, the, the risk is the fact that it's a big estimate based on a roll forward of, of a number of years from the, the last triennial review, which is actually happening for twenty-five. But this will be rolled forward from the previous one, isn't it? I still think, yeah. Then number three risk is management override of controls. This is a standard risk that all audits will have. It is in effect saying that management have the ability to override their control environment. So we do a number of tests to make sure that that doesn't happen and hasn't happened, to provide that assurance. Then following on from the conversation that Ruth has identified of the new adoption of IFRS sixteen. So on page two-six-four, there is the new standard, which will have some new accounting entries and some new transactions in there. We, we see that not necessarily a significant risk necessarily, but as another, other audit risk, because we should be able to identify the transactions and work those through. So it's, it's seen as more of a risk because of the, it's new. And then I think for the, the, the final audit risk is obviously from the major sporting facilities. The prior year, we, we run through Sheffield City Trust and through the agreement that you had there. You've brought them in-house in twenty-four, twenty-five and obviously dealt with how, how those are then going to be managed going forward. So it's, it's more about making sure that those transactions follow that approach rather than it being something that is, is difficult, it's just something, a, a big change and some big numbers involved. So clearly seeing those as the risk. In terms of our rebuttal of a presumed risk of revenue or expenditure recognition, we, we rebut both those as a significant risk because we don't see at this stage that there is the incentives necessarily to actually have those, actually deliver those risks. There's no incentive to move money necessarily from one year to another because there isn't a good year this year and a bad year next year. You know, it's, it's working through the improvements that are needed across, across both years. So we, I think last year we had a risk around revenue, expenditure recognition. But during the testing, it became clear that actually the incentive wasn't there. And we don't, we don't believe that that's the same. We'll clearly keep our mind open as we're working through. On page two-six-nine, there is the, and two-seventy is the mandatory communications we need to make to you, the audited body, and those charge for governance. Then on page two-seven-one is a highlighted framework of the VFM risk assessment that we will carry out. We're going to report that risk assessment to yourselves in the September meeting, which is agreed. Then on page two-seven-five, there is the lovely pictures of us all, if you ever see us. And then, so I think in, in touching on our timescale, the two-seven, page two-seven-seven is our planned sort of audit and timescale. So again, in the September meeting, we're going to bring to you a position statement as to where we're up to with, with the plan to try and get the, some reporting done probably by the back end of October or that sort of framework for the twenty-four, twenty-five work. You'll see there's a, the backstop date and we'll, we'll have some information around how we're building back assurance for the opening balances from the, from the disclaimed periods, which is obviously two years. And we'll, we'll hopefully report that to yourselves and, and working through with the client, with the finance teams in terms of that. On page seven-eight, two-seven-eight, sorry, in the pack is the PSAA scale fees and the movement in, in the year. And you'll see in there, there, there's a to be confirmed for things like the standard fee variations, anything in terms of significant risk or build-back assurance. So we'll have conversations with Philip and the team in terms of that, those discussions. And we'll bring those back to you should any of those be, be needed. And then on page two-seven-nine and two-eighty and two-eighty-one is our confirmation of our independence. And also some of the assurance work that parts of our firm do, it's not linked to, it's, it's a separate team that do it. But that's just some, showing some of the, the work that KPMG actually are doing for, for Sheffield as well around HB assurance and teachers' pensions assurance and the fees that will or won't be agreed at any point in the future. And then I think the rest of the, the report is around revised auditing standards for information only. So happy to take any questions on there, Chair.
Your question, Matthew?
It's, I think, hopefully a quick one, because it's a really easy report to read. And there was just through the appendixes, you've got the audit timeline. And it says significant control weaknesses reported back to the July Audit and Standards Committee. The fact I can't, unless I've missed them, I can't see any of them. Does that give us assurances there are no control risks?
Thank you for that. I can't see any further questions for this and we will now, thank you, thank you, Matthew, thank you for that, thank you for your time. The Audit and Standards Committee has recommended to note the content of the report. I see, no. Right, move on to item ten, the Work Programme, and Philippa, you're presenting this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The draft work programme for twenty-twenty-five to twenty-six is in your agenda packs from page two-eight-seven onwards. There's a couple of changes since it last came to committee, which are outlined in part five of the report. But it's your report, so please have a look, note the programme ahead and let us have any comments. Thank you.
I, I can't see any questions. The Audit and Standards Committee has recommended to approve the Work Programme. Thank you. And item eleven, date of next meeting, the next meeting of the committee will be held on the eighteenth of September twenty-twenty-five at five PM. And we're going to move into private session now, I believe. Thank you.